It's time to study a little thermo. In this review session, the main thing we're going to focus on PV diagrams. It turns out from a PV diagram and a given number of moles, we can find all of these things. These are the things usually asked about in a thermo question. So just from this and this, we can get all of this. Alright, so let's start by sketching some cycle on a PV diagram. And we'll just do, we'll just do a cycle that looks like this. Okay, we got these four points. And we're going around this cycle like this. Okay? Let's go over units real quick. Pressure. We must have the Pascal. Volume. Always need to be in meters cubed for what we do. Temperature is in Kelvin. And if you're given Celsius, how you get to Kelvin is your degrees Celsius plus 273, which is standard temperature. And we'll also throw R on here. R is the gas constant, it is 8.31. And that is when we are working joules over mole Kelvin. Alright, ideal gas constant. Okay, so let's, let's start down here with moles. Let's say in the problem, it's usually given. Rarely are you asked to find the number of moles in the, in the problems that we do. Okay, so usually given N represents number of moles. And just like a dozen, the word dozen represents 12, the word mole represents 6.022 times 10 to the 23rd of something, or Avogadro's number. We don't really have to deal with Avogadro's number that much because we don't really work with particles that much. We usually just stay in moles, so you won't be doing a bunch of mole conversions. Okay, so here's a PV diagram. How do we get pressure from a PV diagram? Alright, well, that is very simple. You simply read the y-axis. Okay, and remember, the point of this is for me to show you how from this diagram you can get all of these things if you have moles. Volume. Simply read the x-axis. Very simple. Okay, now temperature. If we have all these things, we can always get temperature by using PV equals nRT. Alright, the ideal gas law. So if we rearrange that, temperature is equal to PV over NR. So that means, let's say I'm talking about this point right here. If I want the temperature, I can simply go over here, read the volume, go over here, read the pressure. I've got pressure, volume, number of moles is given, I've got R right there. Anytime we know one of these points, we also know the temperature. Okay, so keep that in mind, this is a huge deal right here. Because we will encounter tons of problems where you're given these points and these values on these axes and it looks like you don't have enough info to solve it. But hiding within that PV diagram is the answers to all of these things right here. Okay? Alright, what's next? Delta U. Delta U is internal energy. Alright, and the delta U is the energy that the gas possesses due to its temperature. Okay? Due to the kinetic energy of the particles in the sample. So we'll say this is joules possessed. Alright, the joules that that gas has. And we can get the internal energy two ways. Alright? So we just talked about how to get temperature. Once we know temperature, we can directly go right here and get internal energy anytime we have the moles. So delta U is equal to 3 halves NR delta T. Okay? That's the change in internal energy. So if we were talking about from here to here and we knew those two temperatures, we could do the delta T and get the delta U. We could also, at one point on the PV diagram, we could also just calculate U. Okay, so if we just wanted the internal energy at a point, that's just 3 halves NR T. Alright, so depends on what we're, what we're doing. Most of the time we're doing this, we care about the change in internal energy. Okay, now, when people hear this, they usually think of the first law of thermo. First law of thermo. Delta U is equal to Q plus W. Now, the problem with this is if you're asked to find the internal energy and you go directly to this, it's very, very difficult. Work we can get pretty easily, but Q, it's kind of an elusive quantity. We usually only get Q from this equation. So without knowing delta U, it's very difficult to get that. So be careful with that. Remember, we've got this, this sneaky equation in our back pocket that we can use at any time to get us that if we know the change in temperature. Okay, now let's go to our equations page for a second. On our equations page, they just give us this. And I've never really understood why they don't give us the 3 halves NR delta T because we use this all the time and we hardly ever use this one. Okay, now what is this for? This is KE for one particle. So if we can, if we want the kinetic energy for one particle, we use that. We gotta know the temperature that sample's at, Boltzmann's constant. So how I tell students to memorize or remember the, the nRT is just to go down here and replace Boltzmann's constant. You got the ideal gas law sitting right above this. So if you just plug NR, you'll use this so much, you won't even need to know that. It'll just become part of your thermo vocab. Okay, let's move on to work. Okay, so you learned in Physics 1 that work is a force times a distance, a force acting over a distance. Now, sometimes we might know, let's say we're talking about like a chamber here with a piston inside of it and it's gonna move around. Occasionally, we might know the force that the gas is exerting and then have some distance moved here that it's, that it's going through. And we might be able to calculate the work that way. More often, we are going to use the first law of thermo to get work. Okay? So delta U equals Q plus W can get us the work, but only if we know Q. Okay, so more often, we have to go a different method. Work is equal to negative P delta V. Alright, now this equation is right here. The, the signs are very important, that negative sign is huge. The sign of delta V is very, very important because it is gonna affect the sign of work. And we'll do some examples that help us out with that. Okay, now the overall rule that you need to know with work is this. If work is negative. Okay, what's that mean? If work is negative, let's put some gas in here. Okay, and let's say this gas expands. Alright, in other words, on our PV diagram, this gas is expanding, it is getting bigger because I have a small volume here and I'm talking about this process. Then I've got a bigger volume here, so the volume is increasing. That means the gas did work. Okay? So if the work is negative, we say the gas did work. Okay, so this equation is based on the work done on a gas. Okay, which is confusing terminology, but basically, it means that if it's negative, the gas did work. And the gas lost energy because it did that work. So all this gas down here has some energy. When it pushes this piston, piston up by expanding, it loses energy because it did work. And that's consistent with what you learned in Physics 1. Alright. If work is positive. If you do this math here and you get a positive sign, what's that mean? Means work done on the gas. Okay? So if we look over here, gases don't just compress themselves. Okay, so if this, if we are going from here to here, it's probably because something is taking that gas and squashing it together. Okay, so some force has to push this piston down. And to do that, when we do that, this is the pressures increasing in here and the gas is gaining energy. Okay, it now has the ability to do more work, we would say. So we'd say the work done is positive. Alright? So let's see. Some other things I can tell you. If you are on one of these PV diagrams, we're gonna, we're gonna later, don't draw this on your, well, let's see, let me just get a scratch piece of paper. We'll have some different curves like this. Okay? And like this. Alright, then we'll have some that go like this. Alright, and basically, if you are going to the right, what is the gas doing? Okay, if I'm going downhill or to the right, the gas is expanding. So that means that the work is gonna be negative because that gas is pushing on the piston. Okay, so right means that the work is negative. Okay, now we can also go in this direction on these different curves. So if we go in that direction, the gas is being compressed. Okay, and that compression is going to be positive work. So let's add that to our notes by saying that this right here is expansion. Alright, and this is compression. And there are a few different situations that will cause that. Alright, let's go on and look at the different, the different graphs. The four most important graphs in thermo. We're gonna go through them. And here's what you have to be able to do. You have to be able to sketch these, given the name. You have to know what the names of each are. You have to know how to apply the first law of thermo to each one. And you have to be able to do everything we did on the first page of notes for each of these. Alright, now it sounds like a lot, but once you do a few, it's really not that bad. So what this is really all about is this. Delta U equals Q plus W. Alright, now why is this important anyway? This really is just conservation of energy. All of these are measured in joules. Okay, and here's what it's saying. The energy that a gas possesses at any given time is equal to what is happening with heat flow. Alright? And so if the, if the gas is losing thermal energy, okay, Q will be negative and that's gonna bring down your change in internal energy. Alright? Work, if the gas is being compressed or expanded, like we just said, that's gonna affect what's happening over here, how much energy the gas possesses. Alright, so we will analyze this for all four of these different graphs. Alright, so let's start with isothermal. Okay, an isothermal graph. Here's what it'll look like. It is hyperbolic. Okay, and we'll have some point A and some point B down here. And we could be going up or down the graph. Okay? So what's happening here, here's the special thing you need to know for an isothermal graph. The main thing is delta T equals zero. Okay? So that means same temp everywhere. Okay, so if I put point C on here, point C, A and B are all at the same temperature. Alright? Now, couple things about this, happen slowly. Okay, so let's say, let's say we're going down the hill. What's actually happening here? Good example, you might have like a syringe or something like that filled with, filled with just air. Okay, and let's say the syringe is capped off and it is, the volume of that syringe is expanding, going in this direction and the pressure is going down at the same time. Okay? Now, what's gonna happen is the temperature is going to stay the same if that process is allowed to happen slowly. Okay? So down here, since delta T is zero and we know that delta U is equal to 3 halves NR delta T, since delta T is zero, we also know now that delta U is equal to zero. Okay, so for this process, our change in internal energy is actually zero. So we can say zero is equal to Q plus W. Alright? So that means if the work is negative, so if the gas is expanding, if the work is negative, then Q has to be positive to keep the equation true, to keep this equal to zero. Alright? If work is positive, then the Q has got to be negative to keep this true. Alright, that is an isothermal. Okay, now extra chemistry bonus. What are the changing variables here? Is the pressure changing? Yes, okay, pressure is changing. Is the volume changing? Yes. Alright, temperature is staying the same, number of moles is staying the same. So in chemistry, you learn this, P1V1 equals P2V2. So this graph right here is Boyle's law. Okay, and Boyle's law just comes from the ideal gas law. Alright? Okay, next graph we need to know about. This graph is called adiabatic. And I like to teach these right next to each other so we can compare. If I drew an adiabatic curve on the same graph over here, it would be steeper than the isothermal. Okay? So adiabatic graphs, you can't tell if something is adiabatic or isothermal just by looking at it. You have to be given extra information. Okay? Like if it says the temperature is constant, then you know it's an isotherm. But you can't just tell by looking at them unless we have two curves right next to each other like this and we're comparing. Okay, so let's put a couple notes here, it's steeper. Okay, when compared on the same axis, steeper than isotherms. Okay, temperature does change. Alright, and so if we look at this, the pressure's changing, the volume's changing, and the temperature's changing. Now keep in mind, we could be going uphill or downhill for this. Okay, the main thing you must remember for adiabatic, if you see this graph, automatically you need to remember that Q equals zero. Okay? Heat transfer is zero in this, in this process. The system is not losing or gaining heat from the surroundings. Okay, I can't stress that enough, that's a huge deal. So let's write that down. Okay, so a situation where this happens in your engine. Alright, and it's because it happens so fast. Since that piston moves so fast and the pressure and volume and temperature are changing so fast, there isn't time for that heat to escape. Alright, or for heat to flow in from the surroundings. Um, so these happen very fast, these happen slowly, so let's add that. Okay? Heat transfer equals zero, and we might even add it down here. Let's apply the first law of thermo. Delta U equals Q plus W. Alright, now since that is zero, delta U is equal to the work. Okay, we could even take that one step further and say delta U is equal to, um, actually no, I'm gonna, I changed my mind, I'm gonna leave it there. Delta U is equal to the work done. Okay? We'll go down to the next two, isobaric and isocoric. One more thing about adiabatic that I forgot. Since pressure, temperature and volume change in chemistry, P1V1 over T1, you may have learned as the combined gas law, equals P2V2 over T2. Alright, so if we know the volumes and the pressures here, we can, um, we can figure out different things about this graph. We can figure out the temperature using the ideal gas law. So we might use PV equals nRT to find the temperature at one point. Then we might be, use this to find the temperature at another point. Or we could just do PV equals nRT twice, either way. Okay, so connects it back to chemistry, combined gas laws, what, what we call that in chemistry. Alright, let's move down to these. First one we will talk about, isobaric. Baric, sounds like barometer. Okay, so the constant, here we had constant temperature, constant heat transfer, Q equals zero. Here we have constant pressure. Let's draw a sample graph. Here we have some point, here we have another point and zero slope. So pressure is constant, staying the same. Okay, now during this, V and T do change. Let's analyze the first law of thermo. Delta U equals Q plus work done. And we know that delta U is equal to Q plus work. We could also replace work with, put it in parentheses, negative P delta V. Okay? So the way we use this one, since the pressure is constant and we have a change in volume, we can actually calculate the work using this. So nothing's gonna go to zero here, we're gonna use the full, full first law of thermo. And let's do some sample numbers here. Let's say this is a volume of 1 and let's say this is a volume of 4. Okay? And for the first part, let's say we're going in this direction. Okay? So if I want to do this equation just for work, work is equal to the negative, and let's say the pressures at a value of 1. Okay? So negative 1 times delta V. Okay? So my final is 4 and my initial is 1. So I'm gonna do a final minus an initial. So 4 minus 1 is 3, times a negative 1. The work would be negative 3, okay, units. Okay, if this, if these are in the right units, that'd come out to be joules, but I just made these numbers up. Okay? So what happened here? The gas expanded and did work. Okay, so this is an expansion. Okay, and notice that my change in volume was positive. Alright, now if we're going in this direction, then I'm gonna have a 1 minus 4 right here, which is going to give me a negative number. Negative times a negative is a positive, so I'd get a positive 3 for going in this direction. And that means the gas was compressed, something did work on the gas. Alright, isobaric. Last one. Isocoric. Or isovolumetric. People don't generally have a problem with this one. At least remembering it because isovolumetric means we are isolating the volume. Volume is the same everywhere. Okay, no expanding or contracting. P and T do change. Let's say down here, V is constant. Okay, so delta U equals Q plus the work. Since the delta V is zero, the work is zero. Okay, so that goes away. Delta U is equal to whatever is happening with the heat transfer. Okay, so let's say we're going in this direction. We've got some fixed chamber. Alright, so here it is. And no, no ability for the volume to change. So if the pressure is going up in this chamber, then that means heat is being added to the gas, okay, from the surroundings. So we have a heat flow in, the temperature's gonna go up and the pressure's gonna go up. Okay, so the internal energy is gonna go up as well. And remember, we can say 3 halves NR delta T is equal to Q. So by knowing the change in temperature, we can get the heat flow. Alright, if we know the number of moles. Alright, if we know the number of moles. If we are going down, okay, the opposite is true. Then Q is gonna be negative, okay? Heat is flowing out of the system. When Q is negative, the gas is losing, um, energy. Okay. I think that covers everything except one more thing I want to mention here. And that is area under the curve, okay? So in calculus, we call that an integral. Um, we don't have to do calculus here, the only areas we have to calculate are really areas like this. Okay, so if I block this off, and I calculate this area, what I'm doing is a base times a height, okay? Now, the base is my delta V, the height is pressure. Okay, so this area is a pressure times a delta V, which is work. Okay, very, very important. Alright, now here, these areas, we won't have to calculate the areas under curved lines, but I have seen a straight line drawn like that, okay? And we might have to calculate the area of this triangle, and then the area of this rectangle down here, and use that to get the work. Okay, so keep that in mind for areas. And, oh yeah, last thing, let's also relate, let's also put the chemistry versions of these that we do use sometimes. So, since pressure is constant, we're doing volume and temperature. That's V1 over T1 equals V2 over T2. Charles law. Over here, P1 over T1 equals P2 over T2. Alright? And I think that summarizes all of it. Next, we'll do some multiple choice and some free response. You just learned all the needed PV diagrams. So let's do some multiple choice, do just this page, and then we'll go over it. Okay, hopefully you've worked the problems. Um, I'm not gonna lie, these are very difficult multiple choice problems. Um, especially this one right here, okay? So let's check them out. First one, not so bad. Uh, we got these three different curves here, and we have to tell which one has positive work, okay? So, right here, we have an expansion, meaning the gas did work, that would be negative. Here we have no change in volume, so no work done either way. And here we have a compression, okay? Compression, something is doing work, that is positive work, so answer is A. Alright, now, this problem that also goes with this. Here's the deal. This is difficult because we have to analyze all three of these, and we have to analyze what Q is doing, okay? Now to know, here's Q, alright? We need to find, we need to find, um, for which, which of these does Q come out positive? And there might be multiple of them. It might be all of them have positive Q values. So, it's difficult. The other thing that's difficult about it is to find Q, we have to know what's happening with delta U, and we have to know what's happening with work. So we have to analyze the, the full first law of thermo for all three of them, okay? So let's start with process one here, alright? The best way to think about process one, we'll go, we'll go through all of them right here. And I'll take a lot of time explaining this problem. For process one, the way I like to think of this is to take a look at Charles law. Okay, so V1 over T1 equals V2 over T2. The volume is getting smaller, okay? So if my, if my second volume is smaller, volume, V2 is going down, the temperature must be going down as well, okay? So if the temperature is going down, that means that I'm gonna get a negative delta U. Because delta U is three halves N R delta T. Okay, so negative delta U. We need to figure out what's happening with Q, and let's talk about the work. Okay, for, for process one, we said the work is gonna be positive, okay? So this is gonna, we're gonna get a positive work right here, okay? Now, for this statement to be true, for me to get a negative delta U when positive work is being done, the heat has to be negative as well, okay? So we get, we get a negative Q right here. Heat is leaving, okay? And if you think about it, heat has to leave, if we're gonna compress this, for the temperature to go down and the pressure to remain constant. Alright, very, very tricky. Okay, process two, not quite as bad. In process two, the pressure is decreasing, and the temperature is decreasing as well. And we know, delta U is equal to Q for this one. Okay, there is no plus work, because there's no area under the curve right here. So, since the temperature's going down, that means I'm gonna get a negative delta U. Okay, for me to get a negative delta U, I have to have a negative Q as well. So in process two, heat is leaving. Okay, so that eliminates that, it eliminates that, it eliminates that, that, and three. Only is the answer, okay? Let's talk about why that is the answer. For process three, we know that delta U is equal to zero. Why is that? It's because it is an isotherm, okay? And by the way, we have to be told that, just by looking at the graph, we don't know it's an isotherm, because it could be adiabatic. So, delta U is zero because delta T equals zero. There's no temperature change. So you get zero equals Q plus W. Alright, now since this thing is expanding, right here, we know that the work is gonna come out positive. Since this thing has to equal zero, we have to get a negative for our, our Q. Our negative has to cancel out our positive. Alright? And so... Did I just mess that up? Work, it's expanding, no, I'm sorry, I did just mess this up. Let me start here. This thing is expanding, so the work is negative, I apologize. And that means that Q has to be positive to keep the statement true, okay? There, there's a lot going on in this problem. Since Q's gotta be positive to cancel out the negative work, that means we get a positive delta Q, or a positive Q by heating, okay? So hopefully that problem is clear. I had to stare at that for a long time to get the right answer. Lots of physics going on right there. Okay, let's look at this one. Here's what is happening. If you read through the problem, you have got a changing volume, okay? And, it's gonna experience an increase in temperature while the pressure remains unchanged. What happens to the average kinetic energy, okay? The answer is E. Alright, here's why. We've got a larger temperature here, T2, T1. Alright, as this thing expands here, the temperature is going to increase, okay? And we also, we know that by Charles law as well, so... V1 over T1 equals V2 over T2. And so if the temperature's gonna increase, the volume is gonna have to increase as well. Alright, as this goes up, this is gonna have to go up. So we know that we have this graph. Alright, now automatically, right off the bat, since it says increase in temperature, we know that we can eliminate these three, okay? Because the kinetic energy of the particles has to increase if the temperature increases. Okay, so then we just have to decide the volume thing, and like we said, the volume does have to increase. Okay, last problem. We need to analyze the work and the thermal energy, or Q, again on this one. Okay, whether it's being released or absorbed. So here, this thing is being compressed, because the volume is going from here to here. Volume is decreasing. So, the work must be positive. That eliminates those, okay? Something is doing work on the gas, positive work. Okay, now the thermal energy. We know that this is at constant temperature. So this right here is gonna tell us, delta U equals Q plus W. It's gonna tell us, delta U equals zero. Because delta U is three halves N R delta T. So since delta T is zero, delta U is zero, and I get Q plus W. We already decided that the work is positive. Okay, so since the work is positive, this must be negative. Alright? And, um, that means that the thermal energy is going to be released. Okay, so this right here corresponds to that negative sign. Very difficult problems, you might have to pause the video and kinda look at these a little bit to, to really understand them on your own. Okay, try the next page, and then we'll go over that one. I'll just give you the answers on these to expediate the process, okay? And you can kinda look at these and think about them. Okay, that one is D. These are pick two, alright? So, get used to seeing those. B and C are the correct answers to that one. And twenty, let's see, this one is gonna be A and C. And the answer to the last one is C. Not as hard as the first set of multiple choice, in my opinion. Alright, so hopefully those went well. Let's look at some free response. Try the whole page, and we'll go over it. Alright, here's the answers. Part A. Uh, there's, there's a lot of ways to do the math on A. The answers are fifteen hundred and eighteen hundred Kelvin. So remember, if we know, if we know a point on a PV diagram, we can always get the temperature, okay? Now, I, I chose to use Gayley-Sachs law and Charles law to get those temperatures. And you can kinda look at my work if you want to. The other way to do it is to just do PV equals nRT on each point. So I use the change of the pressures and temperatures to get them. But you can also just say, "Oh, I want the temperature there." Okay, PV equals nRT. Rearrange from, for temperature, and say, "Temperature is equal to PV over NR." We know the number of moles, okay? We know the pressure and volume solved for temperature. Same with point three. Okay, and this way is probably actually, maybe a little easier. I just wanted to do it both ways so you can see, okay? Alright, now the amount of work done on the gas, okay? It is all about areas. So areas under the curve. Okay, so what I did was I calculated the area of the triangle. So this area right here is gonna be the work done. Alright, and it's also going to be the net work, okay? So, cuz it wanted for one cycle. So here's the deal. And we haven't run into this yet in the notes, so it's very, very important. We have these two areas to deal with. Here the gas is expanding. When the gas is expanding, we will say that the gas is doing work, okay? So that work comes out negative. So when I'm calculating that work, I would actually use the whole area under the graph, okay? That's the negative work done, is this whole big shape here, okay? But then check this out. Some work is done on the gas, and the gas is gonna be compressed right here. So this little area... Sorry about that. This little area is, um, is gonna be positive work, okay? So we actually are gonna find the difference between the blue area and the red area, and that's gonna be the area of the triangle, okay? So I said, area is half base times height. The base is the difference in the volumes. The height is the difference in the pressures. So, I did that. And it gets pretty mathematical, and you get a hundred joules, okay? Now, this is just straight up area of a triangle. You do need to go through the process of thinking about the sign of this, okay? This math is not gonna give you the sign. So, it is negative, okay? And, we can put that negative sign in there. And it's negative because of everything I just told you. Now notice, it actually didn't ask us for an explanation here, which is nice. Okay, we can just say that it's negative. Alright, part D, calculate the heat added. So the heat added, we've gotta look at first law of thermo. And it's one to two. So from here to here, there is no area underneath this curve right here. So we know work is zero. So the work zeros out, we get delta U equals Q. Q is going to be equal to three halves N R delta T, okay, cuz that is that. And my delta T is gonna be that, plug in N, plug in R, and you'll get sixty joules, okay? So, that's a pretty typical problem for PV diagrams. That's a physics B problem. A physics two problem will probably have you do less math and more writing and explaining. And that's what we will do in the bonus problem, which comes next, okay? So I'm gonna give you an after-party for this one. If you wanna, if you wanna do the bonus problem, your teacher may or may not require it, or maybe you'll do it in class. This would be a great one for you to do in groups in class. Before we move on, you just made it through the drudges of thermo. So, it's time for Name That Nineties Song. I'm gonna give you a happy one. Oh yeah, great one. First concert I ever went to back in the day. Okay. And now for the after-party. After-party looks like this. Okay, it is an experimental design problem. And it is on point with all of the physics two standards, okay? So, if you wanna try this problem, it is not that bad, okay? It looks kinda scary, cuz it's got all this data to start with. You're going to have to graph some stuff, and do a little bit of discussion. So, maybe, maybe do it with a, with another student, do it in pairs. Maybe you'll do it in class, maybe your teacher will give you extra credit for it, I'm not sure. Um, but welcome to the after-party. Your teacher will have access to the key to this problem. So I'm not gonna go through it or put the key on the video, but if you ask, you may get access to the key and the scoring. So hope you, hope you learned something about thermo and PV diagrams. Um, final note, we, we did, we didn't cover all of thermo. We just covered the bulk of it by covering PV diagrams. So there are some other details that you need to know about thermo. But I chose to just stick to the main material on this. So, thanks for listening, and hope it was helpful.